It is 6:30. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Start with the roll call. We have Steve Whitman, Jack Scarborough, Bonnie Sears, Bridget Powers, myself, Rebecca Hansen, John Ranlett, Chris Buckley, and Brian Murphy. Mary Ann Barnesley has been excused for the evening. We will start with a review of the minutes from our work session on January 3rd. Who has comments edits on the minutes?
I didn't find anything.
I have a bunch, actually. I mean, do you want me to just go through them, or do you? Under Rebecca Hansen Chairman, I think that should be Chair. I don't know if you care, but for accuracy. On number three, the Planning Board recommends, Brian stated the biggest thing to do is state the Planning Board recommends where on the Warren article? Where do we state that?
It's generally, oh boy, it's on the copies of the, at every amendment. It would be underneath when it is turned in, and in its final form, it'll appear that way on the ballot and in the town report.
For accuracy or completeness, should we have that in the minutes? Does it just sort of recommend?
No, because the conversation to that point was talking about how do we get people behind it? And from what I've seen, the biggest recommendation is coming from the Planning Board.
I think what Chris is saying is that he thinks that the sentence needs an extra thing on there that says, "The Planning Board recommends," and then where are we going to put that? That's going to be on the actual-
Warren article.
-Warren article that's going to be circulated to the public when they're voting.
That's what they do with town meeting with the Thales Budget Committee recommends.
After recommends, we put on the article?
Yeah, on, yeah, or wherever it's going. And the same thing, the next sentence, "it," will be on PB Cam? What will be on PB Cam?
Information about the amendments?
Would you like to state that?
I think just information about the zoning amendments will be on the-
Okay.
Shall I continue?
Yeah, I've got something on number six, so if you have something on number five, then-
No, number six was-
Okay. I was just, I was going to just trim that down a little bit, so it's a little less commentary, because I realize a lot of these things did come out of my mouth, but I think it's detracting from the-
Not necessary.
Yeah. And I might feel a little silly. But that'll probably be, that's going to keep happening, and that's sort of the cycle of me saying how silly it sounds last time, and it's going to get put in the minutes next time. But, so I think, I think that something about, so I think we could cut out the first two sentences and say each month we have a word session, and we'll work on the master plan during this time. And I feel like that might be sufficient right there, unless we need to edit it to, I mean, I think that kind of covers what I was saying there. Unless we want to say, everybody on the board needs to be working on this, but I think that kind of, I think that covers the point. So, does that work for you, Chris?
Sure. I mean, whatever your, I just figured that, I don't think that relayed what you were saying, so whatever you're comfortable with on that one.
It followed my train of thought, maybe too closely.
Again, the language on that is work session, and we will work on the master plan.
On number eight, Grace Garby stated that she had read the master plan and wondered if a public member could help with moving this process forward.
But just help, period.
Or that, yeah, that would be good. Very minor point, number 11, everything is in past tense, except for number 11 is Rebecca Hansen comments, and then concurs, the last, Steve Whitman concurs. I mean, for, keeping with the rest of the document, it should be commented and concurred. You got that, Brian? Number 13, Bonnie Sears and Chris Buckley volunteered. I think that was a joke. But here, it doesn't sound, you know, I think the joke was-
I know, because I read it and I said, "I did what?"
Yeah, so I don't know if, I mean, I think the joke could be missed here, and it really sounds like we're volunteering. Though, the joke was that we're probably the two least-
Right.
Can we just trim this down to Rebecca Hansen suggested somebody to coordinate publicity and media about the master plan?
And that last sentence, I think, is good, about PB Cam's Facebook page, because we did talk about that.
Great.
What did you suggest, Rebecca?
I don't know.
On number 13?
Yeah.
I think she just get rid of Bonnie Sears and Chris Buckley volunteered, and maybe the next sentence, too. Is that what we said?
That works.
Yeah, just those two sentences.
Okay. But you wanted to use something in place of media liaison?
Media liaison is fine, unless we want to state the purpose of media liaison, but I think that's fairly self-explanatory.
Yeah, Steve Whitman offered, on number 14, Steve Whitman offered to draft something and sent it to Brian Murphy. Should we say what that something was, or is that-
It was an announcement for PB Cam.
Correct.
But you were going to bring that before the board, weren't you, Steve? Or was it just, did you assume that we had already decided?
I just sent it to you to-
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, so that refers to number 13?
So, number 14 should be a piece that I drafted for PB Cam for you guys to look at. And so, yes.
Maybe we should get rid of, just-
Put that in 13.
Put that in 13.
Just add it on.
Yeah, and then all the other numbers we're going to have to adjust.
I bet it'll do it automatically. Number 15, I think the point here is, just if we cut out, let me say something that I said, so cut out from reminded, or, so, to the end of that sentence, Rebecca Hansen stated we're implementing the master plan right now. So, our second implementation section would be the first Thursday, our implementation session, so take out second, would be the first Thursday of every month. I think the rest is fine.
Did you want to strike, so it should read Rebecca Hansen reminded everyone we are implementing the master plan?
You're some way of, I stated, it doesn't have to, I don't know, I think stated would be fine, reminded is, I'm okay with that, too. And then may, I don't know what everyone thinks about maybe removing, what communities have done this, we need to keep it user-friendly, I feel like, feels slightly-
Isn't the point just that the first Thursday of every month would be a master plan implementation session?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. So you want to cut it after the Thursday of every month?
I think you could just take everything out and say, "The board decided," or, "That session would be dedicated to master plan implementation." It sounds like you just decided to call the work session, the master plan implementation.
Yeah. All right, so we say that the board decided that the first, the work sessions will be master plan implementation sessions. Is that fine?
I don't know, I wasn't here, but that's what I interpreted that that was supposed to mean.
Yep.
And you're probably a good person to read, I think what happened here, this was such a complicated meeting, that it was hard to trans-
The minutes have come out equally as dense, so, I think there's more information than we need, and that sort of detracts from the point. It must have been challenging to write up.
It was. Well, I mean, there's, a lot of the deliberations are really information-dense, you know, because it ranges from topic to topic, so it's kind of difficult to get the gist versus, you know.
I think number 16, the first sentence is maybe sufficient, that-
Okay.
Does that cover, Steve, if we just say?
That's fine.
And get rid of the rest?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think, isn't it Greg DeSanto?
Yeah.
Was it, see, I made that correction, I thought it was DeSante. Or is it DI? I knew there was an I in there somewhere.
Yeah, I think it is DI.
And then there's one random sentence that I think is on top, above, on the top of the last page, that I think is maybe-
Get rid of the whole thing? Yeah.
Just to make sure you were paying attention.
Yeah.
I thought it was funny.
I think it's, I think it's funny, too, but some of the-
Italics, that was good.
I still do mean that, don't tell me about the types. I keep finding plenty.
There you go again.
I know. I'm out, shit. All right, anything in the unfinished or other business?
A comma after moved, between moved and seconded in number one, third to the last sentence, where it's discussed, moved, seconded, and then scheduled.
Is that an Oxford comma, or something like that?
I don't know, but-
Now, a comment under unfinished is, I think, three is bolded, the number three.
Mm-hmm.
Ah. I had to take, look at it like three times to be sure.
With your new eyes, you picked it out.
It wasn't that apparent, yeah. And I thought number two, I, I'm not sure what, it's, it seems very awkwardly worded. Rebecca Hansen wanted to clarify that you were on an additional site walk and visit by the board to see if the conditions set forth in the application or site plan.
About suggesting an additional site walk?
Yeah, like, the word "you," I don't know the who that refers to, so, that, an additional site walk, yeah.
I'm not totally sure what that's saying, either.
Sounded like some creative use of second person, "you were on an additional site walk."
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just not even sure what it's-
I think, well, the conversation was about the Planning Board revisiting places as a site walk. So, I think, that is kind of a strange-
I think I'm saying something, and I don't really, I'm foggy on this, but I wanted to make sure that I was understanding that we were talking about going on an additional site walk, and then what could we do, like, what was the, would be the purpose of that additional site walk?
So, recommended would work in that.
It was really conceptual.
Or maybe that this would be an additional site walk.
Yeah, that works.
After a plan's been approved?
Yeah. And time's gone by.
These points are relative to, after the fact, yeah. Anything else?
Two little things. Under updates, Chris Buckley asked the Conservation Commission to come up with a plan, so, strike if anyone has, because I think that's, I think that's more accurate.
Say that again, Chris.
So, so, strike, where it says Chris Buckley asked, strike if anyone has, and replace it with the Conservation Commission, too.
Okay.
So, the sentence would read, Chris Buckley asked the Conservation Commission to come up with a plan.
Anything else?
And then the last thing I have, the only, on the last bullet point under updates, the last, very last sentence, the only a butter is himself, if you read that whole paragraph, it almost sounds like himself is referring to Brian. This is where Brian's question about, so, I think the only a butter is the, yeah, exactly.
That's perfect.
I would like to say that the numbers are really nice in reviewing the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you prefer that instead of just bullets?
I would.
Then we could go from chapter to number.
It's nice just to be able to, like, under administrative matters, number two, it just makes it easier to refer to, so.
Okay.
And I didn't even really think about that until I saw the bullets under updates, and I was like, "Oh, that's different." All right. You get all that, Brian?
So I'd make a motion to accept those minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, we have our 2019 amendments to the zoning ordinance. Full house here today for our public hearing. Do we want to discuss any of these amendments as a board, or introduce them at all, because I'm sure there are some folks joining us at home?
It probably wouldn't hurt to go through them one at a time.
Yeah.
All right. Would anyone like to introduce the commercial co-location ordinance?
I'd read it, if that's what you're after.
We're just, I think, I think a description would be fine. I'm happy to do it for all of these, but I would like to welcome anyone else to do this instead. All right, so, currently, under our current zoning, for, in the industrial, commercial, the agricultural, and the highway commercial zones, you currently can't have more than two buildings, if somebody please correct me if I'm not explaining this right, on the same piece of property. So this allows for co-location of multiple buildings, therefore multiple businesses, on one piece of property.
We do have two types of structures in the zoning ordinance. One is an accessory structure, which speaks for itself. The article reads more than one structure, main structure on a parcel, so, and then it's further clarified with accessory structure. So, everybody now can have a main structure, you know, typically a home, a garage, plus two other accessory structures without seeing. So, I just wanted to make sure that we were talking about the main structure and not the accessory structures.
Is that sufficient in describing the need for this? I feel like I'm not doing a very good job explaining it.
No, I think I would just add that I think Brian brought this to us because there was an instance recently, and that required going before the ZBA.
Yes.
So we're trying to remove any barriers to somebody having more than one primary or main structure on, on the lot, in the zones that, that's appropriate, so.
That's what I said.
Yeah. Stretching it out.
Thank you. The next one is a, is dealing with residential setbacks. Under the current zoning ordinance, if, I'm going to probably botch this one up, too. Brian did some incredible graphics work to describe this, but this allows for, for, if there, a structure is non-conforming, as pertaining to setbacks, that the, it is, it would now be permitted, if this passes, that you could then pull up the rest of the building in some sort of renovation, no further than the existing non-conforming piece. All right?
I think the graphic and the language really helped clarify that for property owners. I'm a little disappointed that it just says street now.
I'm sorry, Steve.
It's no longer Easy Street.
You were so creative earlier.
I know.
But I think it's more appropriate.
Right, because somebody's going to be going, "We don't have Easy Street in Plymouth."
Can you imagine?
That's for sure.
Ten years from now, some board is looking at this, trying to figure out-
It's only on that street, not-
Wait, wait, so that would mean that in your picture, addition one and the pre-existing encroaching structure could go for flush with addition two?
No. The pre-existing encroaching structure sets the setback. Addition one is compliant with that setback line, whereas addition number two actually encroaches more into the setback, which would remain a variance use.
Okay.
It's more non-conforming.
So you go no further into the setback than the existing encroaching structure.
Okay.
Main structure, too, maybe we should-
Main structure.
Since we're talking about.
Okay. So, continuing with the amendments, we've got some changes to our table of uses. To clarify an issue, we have, we now have a indoor recreation, and we have an indoor/ outdoor recreation. So to clarify that further, we will strike indoor from the indoor/ outdoor recreation, so the zoning table of uses will have a indoor recreation and an outdoor recreation.
Right.
Okay. And then we will change the indoor recreation to be a permitted use in the agricultural, highway, commercial, and industrial, commercial, is it D, that's ICD district?
Yeah.
Okay.
Summer districts.
And then, to address a need that we've seen come forward before the board, is a, we've, we're recommending striking the manufacture of goods sold on the premises in, that's in all zones, as we feel that our site plan review process will adequately cover any issues that might come across with manufacture of any goods sold on premises.
And I think I would further clarify that by saying in the commercial zones, which would be the, the ones that were listed, AHC and ICD.
Okay. But that's also in the village commercial?
Yes, but just to exclude specifically residential.
Okay, all right.
And I think, just pointing out that this, similar to one of the changes we pointed out on the front side of this, this is another case we found that it's, it adds an additional barrier for a business owner trying to do something in those commercial zones, and we're already covered with the site plan regulations.
Okay. And finally, we will add a, the definition of wetlands into our zoning ordinance, which we don't currently have. We propose to use the, the language from the state RSA definition, so, which reads, "Wetlands means an area that is inundated or saturated by surface water or groundwater at a frequency and duration sufficient to support and under normal conditions does support a prevalence of vegetation typically adapted for life in saturated soil conditions." And it does reference the state statute for that, so if the state statute were to change, then we would be following with the state statute.
When this gets put into the format that'll go on the ballot, will it be, will it actually say wetlands as cited in section 42?
It'd look just like this, it will get the definition and the chapter and verse.
Okay.
So that way they know. And then, at the bottom of chapter X, and it is X, not 10, we'll put adopted as reference.
Okay.
And that would lead to the Planning Board later in the year, looking at the bylaws and the subdivision and the site plan review regulations, to make sure that wetlands also is inserted in there, because it isn't at this point.
Okay, so any questions or comments from the board?
I just have one question, I just want to make sure on, on the commercial co-location, the first one we talked about. So this will, this will take care of anything like the commercial cluster that, you know, was mentioned once, that they wanted to put more than two buildings in, they wanted a cluster, and they have-
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure of that.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to open it up to the public hearing, it is 6:55. Would the public like to comment on any of our proposed zoning ordinances?
Well, I'd be short, because I concur with all of the above, that those, first one of the multiple primary or structures on a piece of property, multiple business, I think is a good direction, and at first I was a little concerned about the wording, but now that I've reflected on it, that it's all in the commercial zones, because I was, one of these potentials was multiple, say, multiple apartments, so it's a commercial entity, but it's residential. So, but, I think the way it's, we're in a zone, it's going to be, you know, commercial activity, its use would be residential. I don't know how that's my element of doubt, as to what it would get tangled up in application process, you know?
And if I can answer that, I did look at that, and in order to get, well, nobody's proposing putting like two single-family homes up, but multiple unit housing, they're also already special exception uses to build from three to six.
Okay.
And so, that covers the zoning aspect of it.
All right.
And at that point, you know, the, the board could determine, you know, yes, it is underlying commercial use, if you're renting property, but since it's mostly in the commercial zones, we figured that that, it's going to preclude that. And if somebody wanted to put up something like Harbor Homes, then they still have to run through the other process with the zoning.
Okay.
And they would still have to come before the Planning Board for site planning.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's, there's a whole lot of looking at that.
Yeah, then that's, that was my-
Yeah, but I, I thought there was enough protection already within the zoning ordinance to, that we wouldn't need to bring up the residential aspect.
Well, I could say I concur with all the listed actions, and thank God I'm running with them. Thank you.
Okay, it is 6:57, closing the public hearing. Let's talk about next steps with this. Do we need to hold another public hearing at our next?
There were some minor amendments to the language, I don't think it would hurt, to be honest with you. It never, never hurts, but I think also we'll get the word out better between now and then.
So we can hold it during our next work session in February?
Yes. Speaking to that, we had, had had a public hearing for a subdivision scheduled for tonight that, due to faults within my organization, did not make it. They, I put them on the work session for the 7th, because it's a very simple subdivision. And then we'll get, I can't imagine spending more than a half hour on it, even, but that'll leave plenty of time for the, the rest of the public hearing.
What I'm also concerned with is that was our first work session for master plan stuff, so, if everyone's okay with loading it up a little bit next time, maybe just expect to be here for a good, at least two hours.
This didn't take long, I mean, having this on there, too.
Are you going to be at that meeting?
I will, it's, it's March that I will be-
Oh, March, okay, yeah, I wrote that down.
Let's see, okay, so, we will hold another zoning ordinance amendment hearing on February the 7th?
Mm-hmm.
Unfinished and other business, question of change of use at our most frequented-
Okay, and maybe this is something that we'll work on at the work sessions. The change of use site plan review is exactly the same as a brand-new building site plan review. I think it should be tweaked to focus more- I think it should be tweaked to focus more on the use and its effects than on the physical aspects of it. The Cyberspoons is a perfect example, there was a, a long vacant building, the guy had not a very intensive use of it, but the only paperwork I had to give him was for site plan review. And I was wondering if the board would like to look at that and, and perhaps create a, like a minor or pre-existing building site plan review, or however it works where we would recognize that it's specifically change of use and not the big picture.
I think revisiting and looking, we haven't updated our site plan review regulations in quite some time, so I think as we approach that, I think that's a good time to-
Okay, yeah.
-look at all of that, so, but I don't think we can get to it in February.
And, and, but, no, I, I wasn't looking for it that soon.
Wait a minute.
But the question was, are friends up at the Last Chair, they have the, the restaurant and the storage facilities and the brewery, they're taking more and more of the commercially available storage for onsite use? Does, and, and because, you know, here again, this kind of goes back to that, and I wanted to find out from you if, if, because he will be scheduled to come before you, I told him it's, it's site plan review one way or the other, unless you deem it that it isn't. There are unoccupied spaces there that were originally designed for storage, and like I said, they've, they've been slowly taking over the rest of it, and probably the last few storage units will be subsumed into this other use. Specifically, this is for the bakery using the processed grains from the malting or whatever, I'm not really a brewer, so I don't know, using that, and he'd talked about pizza dough and doing it down at the seventeen sixty-six. There are other, and in discussion on his side, he found that that was a very limited thing to do when it's, it's like a burgeoning market, so that's what they're going to try and do there, they're going to be supplying the restaurant, this isn't going to be retail, it's going to be a subsidiary of the Last Chair in seventeen sixty-six.
So they're not going to sell to the public?
I don't believe so at this point, and that would be all made clear at, at the site plan review. But, you know, since he'd already had the units and they're vacant, you know, it's, it's a little bit different deal than starting fresh.
Is he, yes, is, is he doing anything aside from storing stuff there, are they going to be processing grains?
Yeah, they would be doing whatever they had to do to make it into an edible product. So it'd be, you know, the manufacturing of goods sold on premise and all that stuff, so.
I recommend you come see us in March.
Yeah, and, and I'm not saying that, I'm asking you to waive it, I'm just saying that, you know, maybe think about it in the light of a reduced impact site plan review going forward, but that, that would be the twenty-something of next month, the regularly scheduled public hearing date.
Yeah, that's a, that's a tricky one.
Why?
Well, just thinking about the, I don't know, because they own the storage, the storage unit has slowly been come, the tasting room, and they're brewing beer in there, so I guess, yeah.
And really, whether it's-
Trying to get it all on the table, basically.
Whether it's a commercial rental, or if it's a bakery or brewing, I mean, they're all commercial uses.
Yep.
I do agree that having a minor site plan, we've talked about it before, it would be really handy and for change of use, or even like, was it, who's the auto place on Texas Hill Road?
Yeah, Dan.
Dan, when he came in, I mean, he had to ask for waivers for so many things, and so it was a kind of small, almost home business or smaller scale business, and having, you being able to say to somebody, listen, looks like you hit the criteria for minor site plan.
Yeah.
And not overwhelm them with-
You know, if, if you're comfortable with me striking through what I think doesn't apply to those, or I could have him explain each one to you, depend, it's the will of the board.
It's fine with me, as long as it, it isn't always apparent to me who's the ones, you know, putting the, the waiver on there.
Right.
So as long as I know that's you going through that, then, then that works for me.
Okay. You know, and mostly it would be things like mapping, right, you know, which-
Right.
You know, unless you want to know where the property line is, it's done, you know, but most of the other social stuff would have to be answered by them in their application.
Because the danger would, to just be lackadaisical about this type of situation would be, I mean, this is all stuff kind of related to a restaurant, even the beer, you know, production, but, I mean, conceivably, he could come up with something wildly different and obnoxious in one of those spaces, in which case then we would want a site plan review, so we can't just blanket-
Yeah, no, no, and I, I wasn't looking at that, but I, my question was, how deeply do you want to look into?
I think as we go forward in, in updating the site plan review regs, is providing clear guidance to you as to what, a yes, no, yes, no type thing, so we, they can easily, you can easily navigate the, whether or not this, it becomes less of a subjective thing and more something that you've got distinct criteria that, that allows that to be considered for a minor site plan review, or whatever we decide to call it, so.
I think that's a great idea, Rebecca, is when we look at our secondary regulations to that, that would be a great time-
I mean, we can even-
Create a secondary-
Yes, and call it just that, so we know.
All right.
That's it.
I have one thing I wanted to follow up on, and that was, I can't remember if it was our last, I think it was our last public hearing at the end of December, when we had the, the virtual reality, what's it called?
Cyberspoons.
Cyberspoons.
That's what it's called.
Um, when Cyberspoons was here, there was a question that was raised about, about safety for children and exposure to different types of video games or VR, I'm not exactly sure what to call it, but I did want to follow up and say I did meet with the Lake Region Planning Commission a couple of days ago and just asked their opinion on where, were you here for this hearing, Steve?
No, but I read the minutes.
Okay. And the, the question was whether, what, to, how much can the board question the applicant about protecting, in this instance, the safety of children being exposed to, video games that are rated above their maturity level? And, and just to summarize my conversation with the LRPC is, they said that it's a great thing for us to bring up, but we don't really have the ability to regulate legal versus illegal activities, that's, I mean, I think we just have to operate under the assumption that we are permitting legal activities within the space, but it is a good thing for us to bring up as a board, so. Is that-
So it would probably be similar to a film. A film that's above someone's level that shouldn't be allowed in.
Yep.
You can't, you're not going to stop the theater from operating, but you're going to assume that they'll operate according to the law.
Yep.
Yep.
That's a great question to ask.
Yep, so.
I think in some cases, it doesn't hurt to mention it, just in case they have an objection and say, you know, well, you know, this is this way, and, you know, butt out or whatever, you know?
Yes, and that's what the LRPC said, is certainly bring this up as a board, question the applicant about it, but it's not, we can't put something in the condition of approval is making sure that you're, you know, IDing ten-year-olds or whatever, so, yeah.
But I think sometimes you can tell by their reaction to the statement-
Yep.
A well-prepared advocate.
That, okay, maybe, you know, when it does open up, we need to have a little closer supervision by the, the authorities, so, and let them know that, you know.
And of course, none of us have any idea of what any pushback would be against them. I mean, with the video games, it's, it's recommendations to parents and at the point of sale, but what happens if a minor buys a mature game? You know, is there a mechanism in place outside of this building that will go after that person, or, you know, a, a lot of it, the movie people can be fined, I don't know if it works all its way down to Main Street on that, though, it'd be an interesting question to ask.
But it seems like the, the, their opinion is keep asking those questions, but we can't necessarily adhere, you know, stick those as conditions of approval into, into an approval, a notice of decision.
It's not within our scope of regulations.
Right.
Yep. Anything else?
I, I had something. I just happened to read it in the Plymouth Record today, and it mentioned our master plan, that's why I thought if there's something we missed, maybe we should put it in, but it was about, it's about the armory land, wanting to swap that, and in it, in this thing, it said, was identified as the best place for commercial development, and unfortunately, the town has yet to formally note that preference in an update on the master plan, so, you know, I don't feel like reading this whole thing, but this has to do with swapping the land where, where they want to put the armory now, you know, the town officials want to swap it, because where they want to put it now evidently is pretty prime commercial land.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Right, so anyway, where, where in the master plan did we neglect to put this in?
Must be the-
Well, I think that, well, go ahead.
Can I see the article?
Sure. I missed that article. I spent five minutes a week reading that newspaper.
I'm thinking something-
I know the Select Board's been talking about the property directly across from the airport as a better location.
Yes, and, you know, that's still out there, and so, you know, it's-
You know, what's the governor doing?
Well, it's, it's the adjutant general.
Adjutant general.
He happened, the new adjutant general, and, and the current one, we're there at the meeting, and, you know, we have heard nothing back from them, we submitted a right of first refusal, I mean, if they don't, I mean, they kind of objected, they did not close the door completely on swapping that land by the airport for the property over there, but I don't, I don't really think that will happen, but what, when they move from here out to there, then, you know.
It, just from a military perspective and a planning perspective, it makes sense to me to be adjacent to the airport.
Yeah, oh, exactly. But see, some, some of the first objections, and that's what we pointed out, that the access to the property from twenty-five and that, because they, when they threw the specifications in for Smith Bridge, they were wrong.
Yeah.
And, you know, that the military vehicles would be able to come over that, and that was so noted, and I think, you know, they just said, "We made a mistake," but, um, already based on that, we'd made a decision, and, you know, so, so they've left it at that right now, and it's still out there in limbo, there's been no decision. Yeah, it would be great for us, because it, you know, it would be perfect, and, you know, we can do what we have to do to accommodate them if there's something else we need to do, you know, just to keep that prime commercial property available.
I'm pretty sure that it does say, I mean, I'm just looking at this map right now, that it does show that that area is cited as potential new development area.
Long been identified, the Tenny Mountain Corridor.
But it's in, it's, yeah, it's in, it's in their master plan, and that is an area for-
Well, then, somebody needs to know that it is in there. It looks like we didn't put it in there.
I think that's, I think that's part of it, and the other part of it is, the master plan doesn't rea-, it's not supposed to get to the site level-
Right.
In a way that the article makes it sound.
Yeah.
You know, we're really kind of looking at the bigger picture of the whole town, and we did talk about that area of town, so it seems incorrect.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought, and I said, "Well, if we, if we left something out, then maybe we can put it in there."
Could be a pen, potential for ten other things, but you're not going to put all of those in there, because again, if it doesn't happen, then, ooh, you know what happened, and, so, you know, it's, keep it more general, and everything, they fall in under that, you know.
Now, where was it the armory wanted to put theirs, it's not, it's not that place about right by the traffic circle, is it?
Yes, it is.
Right there, right where they cleared out.
Right.
Yep.
Right there.
Right there.
And that's where they want to put the armory.
On a grade.
Right, there isn't much-
Solid granite.
Right.
Vertical.
And we want to trade them for what land?
The land across from the airport on Quincy Bogwell, there's six, there's sixty-nine acres there. There is, it was originally laid out for additional runway for the airport, and that never happened, but they cleared a lot of it, and in clearing it, I think they created some, some wet areas over there.
So, but they don't want to trade?
Not right now, no. And, and, and why? You know, because we made the decision, and, you know, I mean, you know, being, you know-
My mind goes with common sense, that's why I don't understand why this happens.
Well, if you, if you've ever served in the military, it always doesn't work that way.
I haven't served, but my husband did, and I know a lot about it, through him.
And I'm, and I mean, it's, I mean, it's just that way, sometimes it's, you know, well-
Make a decision, they're bullheaded.
Yeah.
Right, right, we're gonna, we're gonna stick with it.
Exactly.
We don't, we don't have to revisit that.
One thing I did hear about that is that the time ring, timeline is hugely expanded at this point, right? I mean, it's not pending now, it's ten years, right?
Yeah, so, so, and, and I mean, I think, you know, it, I think it has potential, and we just, you know, rather than keep poking it, you know, we'll just wait and see what happens.
Well, if they did trade, is there enough room for, you know, for some commercial buildings to go in there where, where it has a lot of ledge in the back?
Yeah.
There's still enough land for-
Yeah, well, you know, just depend on what you want to put there, you know?
Need darned.
You could put a ski jump there.
Oh, yeah, for us to put, for a business to come in there would be expensive for them to do it.
Yes.
Well, then they might not, business might not even want to come in there.
There is so much ledge back there that it's, it's just a complete wave off.
Yeah, fortunately-
So why do we want to trade?
A gentle slope back to the cliff.
It's a gentle slope back to the, yeah.
So you could locate things close to the highway, for example, and have all the lands behind it.
Well, I think our trade is, we're interested in the old armory location, correct?
Right.
That's the reason for trying to-
And, and what we're saying is-
Armory location and get them to move out to the airport.
You know, where that other, where that other section is.
Yeah, I know they want to put the, for the town.
Well, it just makes common sense, the, the armory, military, they've got access to the airport, access to helicopter landings, it's-
And they've used it for maneuvers and that before, you know, if, you know, there was catastrophic situation, I mean, you've, you've got the airport, you can land the planes, you've got the other runways that you could adapt real quick, and, you know, you've got areas where you can put tents and everything, so.
Yeah.
So it does make sense compared to the other, and, you know-
Having developed expeditionary airfields in my past, I think that it's foolish for them to go to the rotary.
Exactly. And see, see commercially, the town owns Snowy Gables at two or three acres in there, so that combined with the other one.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Well, so time will tell.
Yes.
But it has nothing to do with what we have in the master plan.
No, the master plan, I think, is sufficiently covering that area as being a-
That was my big question on it, because I wanted to make sure we did our part.
We did.
Okay.
Or we are.
The only things I had were, I gave Brian some text to share with you all, but I don't think he sent it out yet, so it was for the PB Cam announcement about our work sessions. So I just drafted something based on what I got out of the meeting, but I think it could always use wordsmithing, so I will follow up with Brian to ask him to send that around. And I don't know, did he, it looks like he printed out copies of a couple of pages I extracted from the master plan and the zoning for next time.
Yep.
I just figured I'd get it done while it's fresh and give you guys as much time to think about questions.
Look at it.
Yeah, exactly, think about questions you have, think about other perspectives you have, recognizing it's only, you know, one-
I think that's a good idea, if we're going to discuss it next session, is to have it now, so we're looking at this specifically, instead of us opening it up in, you know, one of those.
I think that's great, I think that, yeah. I think that's great, I think that, yeah.
I still, I still encourage you, as Chris said last time, if if you want to look at the implementation actions to the back and relate any of them that you think jive or don't. That's always welcomed as well, I know Chris was really excited about doing that himself.
Well, actually, now that you brought that up, Steve. I know you're gonna be sorry you brought that up. You said you were gonna do an Excel sheet.
I'm halfway through that.
Oh, because I, well, I was almost gonna say what I very nerdily, I would have to say. I color-coded the master plan by going through it first, identifying anything that involved the planning board, and then color-coded the short-term ongoing. And that was an incredibly useful exercise for me because it really got me to know, become familiar with the master plan. As opposed to that, like that Excel sheet might just be more of a passive exercise for us. So I don't know, I'm just saying that for me, if anyone likes color and color coding and you have a bunch of highlighters at home.
It makes sense, because when you're going through, you can see the related areas.
Exactly, and already what I've kind of, and this isn't the time to talk about it, but I've I've noticed a bunch of connections that things. Number one, low-hanging fruit, things that we could immediately take care of. And, you know, the way that even under ongoing goals, there's two kinds of ongoing goals. One is sort of a directive, you know, it's something that, you know, you need to do this, but there's another one that actually involves an action. So to further break those down and you, you know, that's, there's a lot of things that we could get done by clumping stuff together, I think. So I think it'll speed up this this process.
So how are you gonna move from your highlighted version to a distilled version of that that we can look at?
What do you mean?
What we'll bring us. Everybody gets a set of highlighters and he gets.
John, I want to skip that part. It sounds like you've already, like, you've started to process this and see what these, is there a way for you to bring that together in a document?
Um, I suppose, but I think, you know, just if if we're going through the document in a work session, it would be easy enough to, like, just on the very first page, there's four things, two blocks of things that kind of all work together. They involve working with the university. And it would be easier, you know, if we're actually working on the document and not to keep it, I don't think tonight is the night we were gonna do that. But when that time comes, I mean, I'd be happy to, you know, collate some of that to, if that.
I could give you a copy of the master plan that you could mark up and then.
I've already done that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this thing is.
And then make copies and distribute them to the board.
Yeah, I I could do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
And that'll keep you on task for that.
I think if we, if that's, if everyone wants those copies, I think that's great, I think it's a good exercise for everybody to do. But I also think it's maybe good for to have one person on the board who's kind of the taskmaster.
Who's keeping an eye on the connections.
Yeah.
You just volunteered.
Sort of the implement, the sort of the, yeah, the taskmaster.
I think that is.
So if that's something you're willing to do, that would take a burden off my shoulders.
Sure, I'd love to do that.
That I'm not dealing.
As Blake Shelton says.
Yeah, but I think we should all also really, you know, take it upon ourselves to look at the master plan just to know exactly what's in there. Because you you could see where things could slide through the, slip through the cracks. You know, you could kind of, here's an ongoing action, because it's ongoing, you kind of forget about it and all of a sudden you're like, whoa.
Well, it's some of those long-term, just because they're long-term doesn't mean we don't start them tomorrow.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
And I think different people look at different areas that works with their expertise and, you know, they can, they can concentrate on that area. And then when we get to it, it really helps.
And that was something, that's another thing I noticed too, John, is like transportation stuff, you know, that, especially the minutia of, you know, how transportation is. The infrastructure of that, how that's implemented, I think that's something like Steve seems to know a lot about, and I mean, that may be them.
Well, and connecting it to land use, which I think our master plan does a nice job talking about sprawl and talking about efficient land use patterns. And and we've made a lot of attempts at studying places like Tenny Mountain Highway, but then translating it into our regulations to guide future development, I don't think it's happened as much. So this is our chance to talk about it.
Yeah.
Did they do any of that when they did that? Because I've got that old transportation study that.
The 25 corridor?
Yeah.
They, no, because I was on the first one when June was the planner, and then I think there was an update to it at some point.
I think Sharon might have gotten an update.
Maybe, yeah.
It's quite the gap.
Yeah. When there were transportation dollars. I just mentioned the text that I sent to you for PB CAM. I don't know if you could circulate that for people, if they have thoughts or if you already edited it and it's good to have.
No, no, I was waiting to have it discussed here before I put it out to the board as a whole, so I'll send it to you individually. Again, refer your comments back to me.
Right.
If there's no substantial changes or, I mean, this is a press release, so it doesn't really need a planning board stamp on it. As long as you concur with, you know, with with what we have been talking about already.
Is this a press release or this is just the?
This is just the PB CAM screen.
Yeah, okay, not the, not the full press, okay.
Will they do any formatting of that, or do we need to do the formatting ourselves?
They can put it up straight, you know, as a card.
Right.
And it, which is obvious, you know, we don't have any photos to attach to it, which would come up and and as they announce the, like, the board of selectments meetings and things like that, it would just flash up for whatever intervals and, you know, but they could insert it into their. You know, and and, you know, I, at this point, I don't want to put the the amendments up because they're not in the final form.
Right.
But I think that there's enough, if, you know, if we can refer back to, and I may add that in there, that, you know, please see the the meeting of 117 for, you know, minor discussion of the points of it. And then, you know, bring it forward, so that way they can refer back, or we didn't spend an inordinate amount of time on it. I think somebody could easily sit and watch that twenty minutes of YouTube and then. That way we're not, you know, overloading that aspect of it either.
Well, I guess I'm just thinking when you, when we get the final text after you've all seen this text, you're like, what, I wonder what it says. It just says about, it just talks about our work sessions and working on implementing the master plan, so making changes to the zoning over the coming year. But I wonder if, I don't know if I mentioned the zoning being on the, I mean, the master plan being on the website, and I wonder if even just an image of the master plan. Just spruce it up a little bit, make it.
Yeah, I'll show the cover.
For the viewer, but if you need help with any of that, just let me know.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
And I'll get on that press release before.
I'm happy to help you with that, yeah. Yeah, we had said February?
Yes, yep. Anything else?
Make a motion here, Jerry.
Oh, no, go ahead, John.
Motion's on the table, it just needs a second.
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second John's motion.
All those in favor of a journey? Any, anyone opposed?